Good evening and welcome to tonight's. Good evening, I'm Doug Kelly, one of seven unpaid directors of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. Welcome to tonight's Mill Valley City Council Candidate Forum. We want citizens to know that Cost Marin is not an anti-tax organization per se. We work hard with county, local agencies, cities and towns to fix poorly written tax measures before they hit the ballot. And we've had great success. And yes, it's true, sometimes we just need to find ourselves in opposition to an unneeded or unfair tax measure. Cost has also become a leader in Marin for putting on webinars such as tonight's. We put on the Marin District Attorney Candidate Debate, one for the State Assembly, a forum on the housing crisis. We've so respected that the candidates for the San Anselmo Town Council reached out to us and asked us to organize one for them. On almost every one of these forums, we've been blessed with the presence of Marin columnist Dick Spotswood to moderate. And for that, we're always grateful. Tonight, again, Dick is moderating this candidate forum. But before I turn this over to Dick, we have some housekeeping to do. Questions will be posed by Dick on a mix of questions submitted by participants in advance and ones submitted during this webinar. To pose a question today, click on the Q and A icon at the bottom of your screen and type in your question. Mimi will keep an eye on these questions and for any that haven't been asked yet to Dick. Your chat function is disabled today, as is the hand up, because the meeting organizers are using those channels to communicate with each other. To turn on closed captioning, click on Show Captions at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The video recording for tonight's webinar should be available within 24 hours on our homepage at www.costmarin.org. These events cost us money and the other events we do do as well. We're committed to doing a lot more of these impartially moderated voter education webinars. If we have the funds, so please think about our homepage and donating by clicking on Donate. And now I'd like to introduce Marin IJ columnist Dick Spotswood.
Thank you, Doug. It's a pleasure to host tonight's forum. I am Dick Spotswood. Every Wednesday and Sunday, political and government columnist for the Marin Independent Journal. And long ago, I was a member of the Mill Valley City Council, so it's a particular pleasure tonight to introduce two first class candidates who will be speaking to you, taking your questions, who are vying for the election. Ballots are going out very shortly, by the way, so get ready to vote in the council election. Let me give you the ground rules first. We're going to open in alphabetical order, means that Susan will go first. And give each candidate two minutes to give us their background and tell us about themselves and anything they'd like you to know about their candidacy and what they're going to emphasize. Those two minutes each will then be followed by the question and answer period. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. We will alternate back and forth between Susan and Caroline as to who goes first. The rules specify that when that's finished, if any candidate believes there's a need to make a 30-second rebuttal. In other words, something came up they didn't have a chance to address. They will ask permission for that, and if it's granted by me, they will give a 30-second rebuttal. That'll go back and forth until we have exhausted the questions. Or it gets closer to 8:30, which is our absolute, you're up dead time, when we're going to end this program sooner if possible. After the question and answer period, each candidate in reverse alphabetical order. Caroline goes first, will make their closing statement, their argument on why you, the voters, should cast your vote for them for one seat on the Mill Valley City Council in the upcoming special election. Those are the ground rules. We really invite folks out there to ask questions if they haven't come up already. Though I must tell you that we've had a tremendous outpouring of questions from our viewers and readers and people who follow this on the Cost website. So there's plenty to ask. Let's start now by introducing the two candidates if we can, and they are on the screen. Susan Gladwin and Carolyn Joakim. Carolyn, Susan, are you there?
Yes, yes.
First of all, a welcome. It's a pleasure to have two first-rate candidates, which makes the debate, it's not a debate, it's a forum. It's a chance for you to exchange information tonight. So thank you very, very much for not only coming, but for running. Let's start by introducing for two-minute opening, Susan Gladwin. Susan.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the Cost team and to Dick, to you, Dick, for hosting this forum. I'd really be honored to earn your endorsement. I'm Susan Gladwin. I'm excited to be running for city council. I bring 15 years of committed community leadership in Mill Valley while working full-time and raising my two children here. I'm the candidate who is bringing strong executive skills with over 30 years of experience in senior business line roles at Apple and at Autodesk. I have direct experience managing global teams and annual budgets over 25 million. I ran a $1 million consulting business and now am a senior consultant for the federal government. I serve on a countywide nonprofit board. I'm already working with two members of our Board of Supervisors. I bring deep and relevant experience in best practices and sustainability. I'm the only candidate who has been serving as a member of a city-appointed task force where I chaired a subcommittee and who has received all four organizational endorsements to date. The Marin Professional for Firefighters, the North Bay Labor Council, Sierra Club, and the Democratic Party. I'm honored to be endorsed by three former Mill Valley City Council members and mayors. The immediate past chair of Planning Commission and current vice chair of the Emergency Commission. I'm proud of the diverse endorsements I've received from community and school leadership and local business owners. I'm running in order to give back. I started and chaired the Parent-Teacher Association and initiated the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Program at my children's schools. I've been a hands-on volunteer as a soccer coach and frequent volunteer at Tam High. I was encouraged by members of the community and the councils to apply for task force and now to run for city council. My platform reflects what I've heard in talks with many of you. I want to build a community that works for all by ensuring that diversity, equity, and inclusion is advanced through milestones that we meet, that we set and meet goals for affordable housing, especially for our local workforce, and that we're prepared for emergencies, including consequences of climate change and address root causes, and become more resilient so that our neighborhoods, small business, economy, and ecosystem can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Caroline, please give us your thoughts on why you should be elected to the Mill Valley City Council.
Well, good evening, and thank you to Cost for hosting this debate and to Dick Spotswood for moderating. I'm Caroline Joakim, and I'm excited to have this opportunity to share with you why I'm running for city council. I've lived in Mill Valley for over 18 years, and while raising a family here, I've worked as an attorney focused on real estate and land use issues. And I also served as a board member and treasurer of the Marin County Bar Association. I've been heavily involved in our community as a volunteer and as a leader. Most recently, I led Mill Valley Little League, which is much bigger than people think, serving more than 700 kids, over 150 coaches, and a 24-member board. I was responsible for the operation of our league, including financial oversight, collaborating with city agencies and other presidents, running board meetings, navigating the pandemic, and resolving conflicts and issues, and I loved doing it. I was also president at Old Mill School PTA and on the Library Foundation Storybook Ball Executive Committee. A good council member understands the issues, comes to meetings prepared, listens carefully, and finds a solution. And these are skills my community experience has provided. And because I want to serve the interests of all, I have focused on and earned local endorsements from 10 of our former mayors and dozens of community leaders with whom I've worked and built relationships with over the years. Our community faces challenges ahead, which are significant and include housing, how to balance the housing mandate with our need for more affordable housing, maintaining the safety of our community through emergency preparedness and safer streets for all users, combating climate change, supporting our local businesses, and fostering social equity and inclusion. Our city council is a nonpartisan group of individuals that work together to represent the entire community. And if elected, I would be the only attorney serving on council. And that combined with my extensive local experience and a track record of collaboration and leadership would be a great addition to council. And I would be honored to continue serving our community as your next city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Now we're going to do start the alphabetical rotation, and since Susan started, Caroline, the, let me get the video on here. Caroline, the first question, we'll start with you. And Susan, you'll have the chance to go second. How do you differ from the other candidate in terms of experience, approach, or policy objectives?
Yes, so if elected, I would be the only attorney on council. And with a lot of changes in state law, litigation issues, resolving conflicts, and crafting city ordinances, these are vital responsibilities I can take on. I also have years of experience leading in this community, bringing valuable collaboration skills to city council. And in my leadership roles, I rallied and worked with local businesses, community members, and the city for the good of our community. And most recently, as president of Mill Valley Little League, I received a proclamation from city council for my superior leadership. I'm ready to bring that same level of dedication and commitment as a member of city council. And I believe the community-wide support I've already earned from people who have served on city council, as well as people who've known me as a leader and personally, demonstrates that I'm the right candidate to fill the current vacancy on city council. I also just want to emphasize my collaborative approach, because it's really important the city council person is representing the interests of all residents and businesses in Mill Valley, and that's what I would be doing on city council.
Thank you, Caroline. Susan? Or anybody would ever like me to repeat the question, don't hesitate to say, please repeat the question.
I'm good this time, thank you. So in terms of differences, I mean, Caroline and I both, I think, have really great track records of community leadership. We've both been really involved in the community for over a decade at least and have taken on important roles. I in particular have initiated, I've initiated a parent-teacher association where there was none at my children's school. I initiated a student or a youth substance abuse prevention program where there was, where there was none at one of my children's schools. I bring a strong business background, and we really are running a business here, as one council member has described to me. We were running a $37 million business, serving with 150 employees, serving 14,000 customers, if you will. And my background in business and growing business and running P and L and managing teams is really quite applicable here. I've also worked with legal counsel in countless, countless different settings. So I, and I know we have a fantastic city attorney who is well-versed in municipal law and will help guide us. Because we don't actually, I don't believe the council actually writes ordinances, but you know, this kind of advice will help us advance our goals through, through the attorney that we have. I also want to just call out another difference is that I've served on to city-appointed task force and have worked already with city staff and council over the last year and a half in that role. I also have, like I said, received the organizational endorsements from the firefighters, Labor Council, Sierra Club, and Democratic Party.
Thank you, Susan. Next question, and it's. Rebuttal? Yes, indeed. Caroline, 30 seconds.
Right, so I think this may be one area where we can be distinguished in terms of candidates. Because while those are great skills in business, I believe that city council's role and responsibilities are well-defined. And it's not like running a business. It's to faithfully serve the residents and businesses and to nurture the city's overall quality of life. And we do that, a city council does it by setting policy for the city and direction for the city manager and as well as its boards and commissions. So this role is really collaborative with other city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, you'll go first this time, because the reversions, you know. In the, in the world of government and politics, tell us one person you admire and regard as a model for your service in public office.
Interesting. There are many I admire, and I admire people from both sides of the aisle to some degree. I mean, that's changed over the years, to be honest, but I, and I, gosh, you know, I admire people at different levels as well. We've got incredible local leadership here and, and I'm, you know, state as well as national. I'm thinking of national and I know this will put me probably firmly in the progressive camp in some people's minds. And it's not necessarily because of her policies, but her, her way of approaching the issues and her way of dealing with and working with her colleagues. I'm going to say it's a tie between Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and Nancy Pelosi. I admire Nancy Pelosi's incredible leadership in keeping, keeping Congress running in a very, very difficult time. And the tenure of her leadership and her ability to go deep on many, many issues and bring coalitions together. I admire Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez for her ability to explain issues and draw on communities. She's a very locally oriented person, but is able to operate and expand up to the higher national level as well in ways that I think have really advanced some of the causes that I care about.
Thank you, Susan. Caroline?
Can you repeat the question? This is honestly, this is the first time we've heard something.
Yes, I expected that would happen. In the world of government and politics, tell us one person who you admire and regard as a model for your service in public office.
That is a very good question, and it's something that we hadn't heard before. So I am thinking about somebody that if you're going to be in a position such as city council, it's essential that you are able to think through issues from different viewpoints and different experiences. And you also must be agile and changing that lens from being down the weeds in the details to stepping back and seeing the bigger picture. And that person that comes to mind is actually Madeleine Albright, who served as Secretary of State. So that's on a grand scale, but she had to have all of those characteristics in order to do her job. And I think she also exhibited great leadership qualities in terms of when to step forward and when to step back and to work together to, with other leaders in collaborating and figuring out solutions to really serious problems. So that's what would be my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. And Caroline, you'll answer first the next question. Have you read the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers tax criteria? If so, and you've been sent the website link to that, if so, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Sure, I have read the criteria, and I actually agree with them. I believe it serves as a good checklist for voters to use when they're trying to assess a proposed tax measure. I know that I value a clear and understandable explanation of a tax and why it is necessary. I find these to be key considerations, as well as what's the impact to the taxpayer. I also appreciate the inclusion of a reasonable sunset, because it provides the public with an opportunity to revisit this tax and determine if circumstances have changed and/or to confirm that the public agrees that this tax should continue. I also think it can be helpful to cities to have proposed tax measures reviewed before they propose it to the public in order to consider things such as the languages. Is it clear? Is there something vague? Does it need to be more specific? So that would be my response.
Thank you, Caroline. Susan, comment on Cost?
Sure. Yeah, I've absolutely read them, and I do, I do agree they're a great guideline. And I appreciate the work of Cost, not only in providing these kinds of principles and guidelines, but also the, you know, the catches that they've made in terms of errors and things that need to be corrected or clarified in, in the things that come before us as public. So that's a great service. Some of the things that stand out from the guidelines in particular, the notion that local governments should tap cost efficiencies and ability to work with other tax sources before going to our own tax base. You know, those kinds of resources and grants and other resources that can be available to us. That's, I would definitely agree with that, and I think there's a lot of potential for that going forward. Secondly, I really think it's important, and this is a guideline that you put forth, that taxes and fees shouldn't escalate faster than incomes, both for businesses and for individuals. So that, that is an important guideline to keep things solvent and on the right track. I definitely agree with the reasonable sunset notion that that's, that that's spelled out and defined. And finally, on the equity side, that we spread the burden as fairly as California law permits. That's important to me as I prioritize that. We need to encourage exemptions and discounts for people that are in different categories of, of ability to pay, and that might be include seniors, disabled people, and lower-income tax rate payers. So that's, that's probably the most important one to me.
Thank you, Susan. Susan, you will go first on this question. The town of Fairfax recently approved two tenant-related ordinances. One was the so-called Just Cause Eviction Ordinance, and the second was a rent control ordinance whose terms limit rent, annual rent increases to amount less than permitted under the new state rent control law. What's your opinion on the new Fairfax rent control ordinance and on Fairfax's Just Cause eviction ordinance? And you believe that these two ordinances are something that Mill Valley should consider adopting? Susan?
Sure, I think, I think over, this is, this is the kind of thing that we're going to be needing to look at actively as a council. And I am, I'm interested in bringing perspective to this, but also to hearing what the community says. I mean, there's, there's multiple sides to this equation, multiple stakeholders in this. We've got, we've got renters such as myself, we've got, you know, former homeowners, so I can see both sides of that. We've got the landlords, both big and small, and those are, those are different considerations, depending on whether we're talking about, you know, a mom and pop landlord or something bigger. And I think it's important to look at the possibility of rent control as a way to protect the more vulnerable, as a way to make cost increases predictable, which could ultimately benefit both sides, I think, by making it feasible for people to be able to stay where they are and continue to pay rent, rather than tenants having to search and search, or landlords, I mean. So I think that, that, that's an aspect of it that's going to be important for us to look at. Well, again, we'll have to tailor it to the specific needs and profile of our community here in Mill Valley. Just cause can make sense, especially if it's for the, you know, multifamily, multi-unit buildings, I should say, where that protects, that protects the renters and tenants in situations where it might not be just cause. I think, I think we need to look at maybe adjusting that a little bit for mom and pop again, because of the the value that they have for the longer-term tenants and the fact that they're often running to neighbors and friends. And so we need to really tailor this against the needs of our specific community.
Thank you, Susan. Caroline?
Yeah, so we have rent control provisions provided by the state, which limits rent increases and removes the right of landlords to evict tenants without just cause. Rent increases are restricted to the allowable annual rent increase to 5% plus the local cost of living adjustment. And there's a limit on that of no more than 5%. So we've got a maximum increase of 10%. So that's state law. I do know that the rent control ordinance in Fairfax was very controversial, and they're still going through it right now. So the problem was that it was just how the ordinance was written, in that it actually worked to harm local landlords who rely on this income stream. You know, and it might also discourage homeowners from creating rental ADUs. And there was also a concern that not many residents of Fairfax were aware of the city council's vote before it was actually taken. So I have not heard that this is an issue here in our town, but that said, 30% of our residents are renters. So I would certainly look at that issue, because to not have a conversation, you know, would be odd, considering what was going on in Fairfax and then our renters. So there are some state regulations on rent control already, and I would just need to understand the need for additional restrictions and how any changes would impact our local community.
Thank you, Caroline. Caroline, you will go first on the next question. There's a movement in some North Bay communities not to allow additional gas stations and in some cases to close existing gas stations in the name of restricting carbon emissions. You support taking such actions in Mill Valley?
I do not at this time, and the reason being is that I think that's putting the cart before the horse. And so we do have plans in a state in terms of getting more electric cars on our roads. And I think that that needs to be the driver before we take away gas stations here in town. I think that Marin, you're seeing that in the North Bay and in Marin, because we do have a lot of people that are using electric vehicles or ZEV, zero-electric ZEVs. But at this time, I think that's something that we keep our eye on, but I do not see that there's a need to restrict gas stations at this time here in Mill Valley.
Thank you, Caroline. Susan?
Could you repeat the question, Dick?
Of course. There's a movement in some North Bay communities to not allow gas, not allow additional gas stations, and in some cases to close existing gas stations in the name of restricting carbon emissions. You support taking such action in Mill Valley?
Yeah, I would separate those two things. I think when we look at carbon emissions, transportation is the biggest part of our pie chart. And moving forward, we will need to begin eliminating gas from our, our transportation options. I don't support taking away the existing gas stations. I do think we need to have an on-ramp for how we're going to move people over to the electrical option. And without full, full support, without the, we need more public infrastructure to support public EV charging for those who can't do that at home. There's a lot of people like, you know, Caroline said, 30% are renters. A lot of those folks don't have options to do charging at home. And as we move our vehicle fleets to EV charging EVs, we will need more charging options. So prioritizing that, that infrastructure build out, then we can gradually turn away from the gas option. As terms of new gas stations, I don't, I don't see a need for new gas stations in Mill Valley. I think we're served well by what we have, and I think investing in this, in in infrastructure that we know is going to be phasing out would be doing ourselves a disservice. And I, and I think also we'll definitely not support meeting our carbon emissions goals.
Susan, the next question starts with you. Some communities are banning natural gas hookups in new constructions. Mill Valley may face new constructions on the arena housing numbers. Do you favor such action in Mill Valley, restricting new, new gas?
Yeah, it's important to distinguish that new. I do, and I was part, you know, I have been serving also informally representing Mill Valley as part of the Marin Sonoma Building Electrification Team that is putting together a coalition of, of leaders who are supporting and helping define those kinds of policies at the county level and also in our 11 cities. Marin County has passed that, that ordinance that will mean that new construction does need to be all-electric, and a number of cities are getting on board with that. There's a great desire to get all of us on board, because it will make it much easier for contractors if they have a clear, consistent way of doing business among the cities in terms of the types of housing guidelines and permits and so forth that they need to, to, to work under. Clearly, if we're going to meet our emissions goals, emissions reduction goals of 47% reduction by 2034 Mill Valley, we need to not be putting in new gas infrastructure. We will deal with how we move the existing stuff out, and that's going to be done in an incremental way that needs to be accessible and affordable for equity reasons, among others. But clearly adding new is counter, counter to that. And it's also, there's also health and safety concerns that come with gas in our homes. And so this, this supports us a chance to have a safer and cleaner future.
Caroline?
Do you mind repeating the question? I just wanted to distinguish between no gas versus are you asking for all-electric ordinances?
I'm asking this question simply about not having gas connections.
I see. So.
New construction.
On new construction, yes. So that is an interesting question, since all-electric ordinances, I'm going to go with that, are considered a reach code, because it goes beyond the state mandated building code updates. And then all-electric ordinances, which by definition, for this is for new construction, all-electric ordinances by definition, no gas, have already passed, as Susan mentioned, at the county level, but also in San Rafael, San Anselmo, and Fairfax. So I believe this is something that we were going to be, need to look at here in the near term. And then all-electric ordinance, it'd be supportive of climate resilience as well as long-term emissions reduction. So through electrification, so I think that would be a good thing. I know that San Rafael's ordinance requires new building to be electric. Uh, requires new building to be electric and EV ready, so. Um, I think it likely that Mill Valley will do something similar, um, but what it ultimately looks like will require staff. Uh, staff recommendations as well as public input.
I believe Mimi has a follow-up question from somebody in the audience. Mimi?
Uh, yes, um, the follow-up question uh that was submitted is, uh, do candidates want to require gas? Appliances to be removed when there is a renovation over a certain percentage of the square footage of the dwelling?
Uh, do you want me to answer that?
Yes, Caroline, then Susan will have an answer to up, up as well.
Um, so yeah, that, that's, that's something to consider. You have to look at the specifics of that because. Um, typically, when we've done new construction, uh, rules or ordinances, sometimes it does take. Um, it includes a remodeling of a certain size, so. Um, that's possible. Uh, I, I just haven't looked at it. I don't know what the ramifications are of doing that. I know it's been discussed and, and bantered around. Um, another thing that may you want, we may want to look at is um Marin County Civil. Brand Juries, uh, earlier this summer, last summer, um, did a report electrifying Marin. So that's something that I would probably look at as well for some guidance, but again, it'd come down to staff recommendations here in town.
Susan, the question is, uh, remove gas hookups in the case of remodeling over a certain dollar square foot criteria.
That's right, and there is, there is another ordinance, another reach code ordinance that has been passed at the county level, so in addition to the new, um. All electric for new construction, there is another, another one already on the books for. Major remodel, which is a certain percentage of square foot, and I, I believe that, I don't know for sure if that number is thirty percent. Or more, but it's something along those lines. Um, and the idea is that if, if a homeowner is investing at that level, that that is the right time to make the switch, and. I believe that, that, that does make sense. I think, um, again, like I said, if there's a consistent way of doing this across the county. It's going to benefit us all, and we will have more economies of scale and, and, and hopefully make this a more affordable thing to do.
Thanks, Susan. Caroline, you'll go first this time. During the pandemic. Many Marin agencies, including the Mill Valley City Council, responded by having their meetings on Zoom-like formats. That had a two-way feature enabling home viewers to ask questions and make comments at appropriate times. Should the Mill Valley City Council continue this process indefinitely? If so, why? If so, if not, why not? Caroline, then Susan.
Sure, um, so I thought it was a great thing to do, especially during the pandemic, because it kept. The public engaged and it also kept a parent, what's required transparency and accountability in place. However, I think that, um, it was just this past week that they're going back to cities or going back to. Uh, in person, and there will not be any more Zoom, so, um, I don't know the origin of that, um. I, I do wish we could still do the Zoom. I think that everybody's used to it. I think it makes sense. Um, so I wish that that was, we would be, continue to do that going forward because I think it's important in terms of. Uh, city council being accessible, um, people may not be able to make the meetings for whatever reason, but you know, with Zoom. Um, you're, you're able to do it, so I do think it's a good thing, and. Um, I'll have to check on the specifics, but that is something that I just heard, so from here on out, I hear that city council meetings are going to be live and in person.
I think they turned off the Zoom function a, a couple of months ago, actually. Uh, Susan, the question is, should they do it, and if they turn it off, should they turn it on?
Well, I, they don't currently do it now anymore in Mill Valley, and I, I'm a hundred percent behind hybrid meeting. As, as the way to go, so that we have live and Zoom. That allows the most number of people to listen and participate. That fosters democracy. It also fosters equity. Um, from the perspective of folks who are disabled, might not be able to get there or, or have small children or are. In some sort of working environment where it's just not possible to get there, and so. Especially now that our council meets earlier, five thirty, starting this last month, um, it really does allow more people to participate, and that's only a good thing.
Uh, Susan, you'll go first this time. We're going to be talking about Rena. Regional housing need allocation. You both knew this topic would come up. And what's your opinion on Rena, the regional, the state mandated regional housing needs allocation in general? And as applied to Mill Valley, what's your opinion of their allocation of eight hundred and sixty-five new homes? Is this number justified? Susan, then Caroline?
I can't speak to if this number is justified. I do know at the state level, there's some, you know. Large number, well over a million, that is being apportioned out to all of our cities and, and towns. Um, and I, I can't speak to the methodology. I know there's some question, though, about. Whether or not it's, it's appropriate, given the constraints of our, our particular type of town. And that's, that's, that's something that needs to be looked at. However, eight sixty-five as a number and then as a mandate has come to us as a law that we need to fulfill. At, to the best of our ability, and so, and, but the, but the real issue is, are we doing this in a. Are we building housing just for the sake of housing, or are we actually building affordable housing? And, and Dick, you yourself wrote a wonderful editorial that, that really encapsulated the, the, the equation, which is. You know, we need to flip the ratio so that we are, we're providing the majority of housing units for low and medium income. Um, people, and we need to make those available not only as a rental option, but as a homeownership option, and there's, there are opportunities. To do that through um land, creative land use and other options that would allow that kind of equity option, so. I'm, I am, I believe we need to meet the mandate to the best of our ability. I, I understand the suffering that it causes because of the constraints we are facing, um, seventy percent of our land dealing is, is in the wildfire, wildland. Urban interface that constrains us, we can't build safely in, in the large portions of the, of the area of our town. Um, so we need to, very thoughtful, I thank you, we need to be very thoughtful about maximizing the potential. Of the spaces that are left to us, and there's a lot of creative options that we can look into.
Thanks, Susan. Caroline?
Dick, do you mind repeating that? Because I think that there were three different parts, and I want to hit all of them, um, because this is a big issue.
What's your opinion of the regional housing needs allocation in general?
Okay.
And as applied to Mill Valley with their allocation of eight hundred and sixty-five units, is this number justified?
Got it. Okay. So in general terms with respect to Rena, the methodology used, there was an assumption of what. The number of housing units that we were, would need in California. Some people have challenged that. Um, they believe that, that starting point is faulty. So there isn't, there might be an issue with methodology with respect to Rena. Um, what I do know is that it hasn't been since, I believe, nineteen eighty-six that we've seen. Um, this mandate for this number of units across the state. And what this has meant is that there's incredible pressure on towns across the street in terms of trying to meet Rena. Now, people will argue they've had plenty of time to figure this out, but it stands that. Cities are still struggling to figure out how to identify that number of units, and so to just to put in a perspective for Mill Valley. Our last uh housing element cycle, we were asked and tasked to add a hundred and twenty-nine units. And this time it's eight hundred and sixty-five units, so we're talking about six hundred percent increase, right? So. The question is, is that justified? And so the question that we all have is. What is happening in terms of our natural resources and to our towns? Because the methodology really is, um, it's uh five different levels and it's like a percentage, so. It almost takes the, the local control out of that beginning part where the state doesn't seem to take. Our topography, um, we're ninety-seven percent built out, sixty percent of our parcels are on hillside, seventy percent are in Wui. We're a high risk force, so zone, so what, what we're left with is very, um, oh. A few of available spots. Um, I will say that there's, there's lawsuits happening in Southern California because they were part of that first wave of. Of Rena and. Housing element, so we should watch to see what happens there.
Uh, Caroline, you're next. We're going to stay on the, the topic of housing, but get more specific. One issue that's generated much discussion in town is the city's proposal. To have new housing built at One Hamilton Drive across from Harkey Park and next to the Public Safety Building. I'll ask first, what's your opinion of the project? And second, number of, of viewers have sent me a question that says, how come they haven't put up story polls yet? Those are the polls that generally go with new construction, something typically done with new construction. You believe that story polls should be erected on the One Hamilton site before any decision is made? Caroline?
Okay. All right. So. There are challenges with respect to identifying possible locations of a multi-unit project. Because, as I said, the city is ninety-seven percent built out, and almost half of the vacant land is small, less than six thousand square feet. So. Hamilton is a city-owned property, and so it's become this possibility, and that is why the city started exploring it. And they've engaged, they sent out RFP, but only one um organization responded, so. In terms of that location, it seems like a good place to start looking. What happens with it is unknown at this time, and that is because. They've just started the research on that and reviewing the design. They just finished, um, the environmental. They were looking to see if asbestos was in the serpentine rock. So in terms of Hamilton. They had to put a cost to the design, and then they're going to continue along with the environmental consideration. So this process, this review process is going to take the better part of this year. Um, in terms of story polls. So I did ask about story polls, and is there some kind of challenge with respect to putting story polls on that site? Um, they're planning to do uh computer visuals so that you can get a better sense of the scale of it. Um, that's all I know with respect to the story polls. Um, I do know I'd encourage everybody to continue um being engaged in the process, um, as we go through the review. And to determine if this is um a great site for a forty-unit, multi-unit project.
Susan, One Hamilton?
Sure. Can you repeat the question, Dick?
Of course. So far, one issue that's generated much discussion. Is the city's proposal to build new housing at One Hamilton Drive across from Harkey Park next to the Public Safety Building. What is your opinion of the project? And also a question from viewers, so far the city has not erected story polls, something typically done with new construction at the One Hamilton site. You think that's a good idea, a bad idea, or would you act that store, ask the story polls be erected?
Thanks, um, you know, the city has not built any affordable housing since the nineteen eighties, so this project is very important. It is affordable housing, and we need affordable housing, so I'm, I'm behind One Hamilton for that reason. I recognize that there are issues, and I've talked to a lot of the neighbors that live in that area. I've heard concerns. I, I've heard, um, the reasons that. It feels, it feels difficult for, it is difficult for this neighborhood to be working, um. Through the issue of what it means to bring something like this into, that's very different into the existing place. But I think at this point in time, we can't go back on our affordable housing commitments. It is one of the very few places that we have available to us. There's been a lot of community dialogue. I've been part of these, going to these meetings. I've heard, you know, the discussions. Cities being very thoughtful about how they're planning it and. Um, the decisions that are getting made are being kind of taken to the community every step of the way. It doesn't discount. The concerns and issues that are being raised, but it's, it's, it's the process that we have to go through. Um, as far as story polls go, it, it does seem like a very valuable thing to allow the community to visualize the impact, and. Um, I would hope, I, I, it's my understanding that the city staff is looking into ways to do that, whether that's a physical. Um, installation of story polls on site or some sort of digital or some sort of. Um, combination of those two things, but I think it would, it is important. It helps further the dialogue, and it helps, um. People get comfortable with what this can mean for their neighborhood and how, how it might end up being a good thing.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, you're, uh, uh, going to be next. Different topic. It's been proposed that the north-south greenway, the bike and pedestrian path along the bay shore from Sausalito up north. Be extended to connect Mill Valley with Corin Madara via the long-closed Alto rail tunnel. Do you support this project, and how should be paid for?
Well, broadly speaking, I'm, I'm a proponent of using bikes to get around. I mean, that's one of our core strategies for getting people out of cars. Electrifying bikes is a really exciting piece of our climate strategy and equity strategy and, and just general community well-being. Of course, we have to deal with safety concerns for those as well. So allowing us to bike further, um, and I biked over Camino Alt to myself. I recently electrified my mountain bike, so I cheat. Um, it's, it's a bit of a haul if you're not. Um, kind of a racer biker, and I think just in general principles, anything we can do to make biking more accessible to all of us is a good thing. I know there's concerns. I've talked to some of the neighbors over there. I've heard different costs. And so I would need to understand better, what is it really going to cost if we ever were to do that? What would it actually take? What would, how would we mitigate the impacts on the, the community that lives there? It, I mean, it seems like a dream if we could just shoot a, shoot a cross to, um, to the north, uh, without having to go up and over a big hill. But I would really want to understand what it would take to do that, um, before I could really weigh in, in an informed way. But I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm a proponent for expanding biking options wherever possible.
Thank you, Susan Gladwell. Caroline? Yeah, agreed, of course.
Yeah.
It proposed that the north-south greenway, the bike and pedestrian path along the bay shore from Sausalito to Northern Point. Be extended to connect Mill Valley with Corin Madara via the long-closed Alto rail tunnel. Do you support this project, and how might it be paid for?
So, um, I too have an electrified mountain bike, and I appreciate it every day. Um, and I am all for biking and extending our bike paths and our networks. Um, however, the tunnel, um, is very problematic in terms of a couple of things. One is cost. Um, it would be very expensive, uh, to drill through that area. And there's also some issues with respect to engineering, which would add to the cost of the project. And then also, there's also some easement issues with respect to the properties, uh, surrounding the tunnel that would need to be, um. Resolved, and I don't know if that would be possible, so, um, yeah, of course, in theory, having paths. And short paths and direct paths, um, to connect Mill Valley to Corin Madara are wonderful, but we do. Have a way, it's a roundabout, I, but I've done it many times, and that's, um, going by Edna McGuire and through Horse Hill, and then along. Um, the path along the, the highway, so, um, that's an already existing path, if it needs to be safer, you know, I. Be more than supportive of that effort, but, um, I don't believe that the Alto Tenno is something that should be. Um, looked into any further.
I'm going to ask Mimi, do we have some, I have additional questions here, but let's see if we have, might have some questions from some of our viewers out there. Mimi, you have any?
Uh, well, um, one question that, uh, has not been touched on. Uh, reads, I am a small business owner in Mill Valley with my wife. The constant construction for several years. Um, is really impacting all downtown business. What is the plan for small business to thrive?
Uh, this time it's going to be Caroline. Oh, no, that was Caroline last time. This time it's Susan.
Sure, yeah, it's been a very painful thing for small business, and I've talked to a lot of small business owners. I've, I've been happy to have supportive. Small business owners. Small business is critical to our, our city's future. It, it becomes a ghost town if they're not there, and we don't really have a community. Um, if we don't support our small business people, so I'm, I, I, I hear that pain. I know that this construction has dragged on for people. And it seems like the city can do more, both in terms of helping the small businesses anticipate what's coming and plan for that. Especially around the critical holiday shopping season, which I, I know was difficult, um, over the last period of time. The city can do more proactive and more specific things. For example, we could be waiving parking, um, fees during construction. So that people feel encouraged to come to Mill Valley. I know that we're almost getting a reputation of just being too difficult to get into in general, and we need to fix that. By addressing those kinds of things, we can also. Um, our, our, our parking enforcement officials could also be helping with parking kind of concierge during these difficult times. And especially for small businesses that have construction right in front of them, so we've got opportunities to provide services like that. Um, we've also got other aspects of what it means to help small businesses thrive, that, that could include things like. Continuing the outdoor options for those businesses that, that benefits, um. Uh, we certainly could provide more ability for, uh, having essential businesses that will allow people to come through on a more regular basis and. Stay and stay as well as, um, pass through Mill Valley. I'll stop there since time is up.
Caroline?
Yeah, so I'm very sympathetic to local businesses, especially during this compacted and impacted time of construction. On Blythe Dell, and there's going to be another project coming up, um, in the downtown with respect to. You know, widening the sidewalks, so that is going to continue as well, and. You know, I, I think that the city can be doing a, a good job in terms of working with the businesses. Being proactive in terms of. Being proactive in terms of letting them know the schedule is. And there's maybe an opportunity to work with. The contractor in terms of the hours or the timing of it if to be more sensitive to businesses, I I don't know. The person who posed the question, I'm not sure what business they have, so I don't know when it's impacted, I'm assuming it's during the day because they mentioned, you know. Construction, so. That is part of it, and also, I mean, I'd reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, they've been. Wildly creative in terms of supporting businesses during the pandemic, so you know, why wouldn't we try and do something similar when? We have our local businesses impacted by construction projects. But I think that it's it's a balancing act for sure, because these are necessary projects and they're going to impact businesses, but. We need to have those open lines of communication between the city and the businesses, so. The city is more sensitized to what's going on with the businesses and how they're impacted. And then they're in a better position to maybe negotiate with the contractor to figure out. If there's a better time for doing it, for example, I know that the. Public Works is taking advantage of the upcoming ski week to do more work in front of Park School when there will be less traffic, so. Things like that I I think are really possible, I think that we just need to communicate with one another and figure out what the needs are and then address them.
Thank you, Caroline, Mimi, you've got another question regarding traffic? Start with this.
Okay. Sorry, this is actually two questions here combined. One of them is to ask the candidates to speak generally about what, if anything, they would propose to deal with the traffic issues in Mill Valley. And then there's a specific question. About East Blythdale. And. Whether you would restore to a traffic on Hamilton Drive to alleviate that congestion. And how would that? Dub tail with the Hamilton housing. Proposal.
Caroline, then Susan.
Okay. All right, so traffic issues, and the good news is. This is actually an issue that we have local control over, so. Traffic has always been an issue for as long as I've I've lived here, and I know it's more impacted when we've got construction going on East Blythdale. But I think we need to do a better job of being aware of the peak traffic times, because there are times when I can sail down East Blythdale and be in the city within twenty, twenty-five minutes. So it's really, we need to look at what is driving the traffic and in large part, it's the peak driving times, you know, it's it's. Getting the kids to school and it's pickup times is going to. To after-school activities as well, so. I would, there's a couple of things. First of all, you have to acknowledge that the traffic disproportionately affects that neighborhood, so we should be working with neighborhood associations to get their input as well when we're. Proposing anything. The other thing is bolstering existing programs, I think that this isn't, you know, an easy win, including share the path, safe rights to school, safe routes to school. That aim to have less cars on the roads during those peak driving times and encouraging walking and biking, whether to school or downtown or running errands that, you know, involve Blythdale. And of course, you know, reducing the neighborhood traffic by providing safe alternate alternatives to transit. You know, there's some challenges with respect to biking and walking and safety concerns, so. Or not having sidewalks or paths, so again, I'd work with BPAC and as well as the neighborhood associations and schools to promote safe bike lanes. And and walking paths, I mean, we also did, we were at Old Mill, we did the walking bus where we'd meet up in a centralized location and then have an adult walk to. The kids to school, so any way that we can mitigate. Those peak driving times, we should, we all are aware of when school starts and when school gets out, so we should be doing alternative routes or. Waiting until there's the traffic dies down. With respect to One Hamilton Drive going two ways, I don't see a need for that right now. So I. I don't think that's going to necessarily alleviate the traffic. Coming out of Blythdale, I think it's really just dealing with those peak driving times.
Susan.
Yes, I'll start with One Hamilton, I think I think it's important that we. That we keep the one way there because of safety issues, it is right by a park, children cross the street. Families are there, people are playing, it's it's it it's a traffic calming, and I think it's safer if it's. One way for the community there, and I don't know that it would alleviate the traffic in particular. I think other things will, other measures, we, you know, we used to have a bus service to the city. Route number four that I would take when I went to the city, that service should be reinstated, and I I know there's issues with getting drivers. For our bus routes, but that's something that I think is the council and I would want to be advocating for. We also need to look at traffic patterns and our own contribution to that, fifteen thousand people come in driving to our city and fifteen thousand people go out every day, and that's a lot. That's that's. Do in part because we are running, I think, on average eleven trips a day, which is kind of hard to believe, but there's opportunity to look at behavior modifications. I myself have looked at how do I link errands, so I'm not going in and out, in and out. But doing things in sequence where I make one big trip, one big circuit, and I'm and I'm done. So I think educating our community about that, educating our community about alternate means of transportation. Making it safer, safer routes to school is important, bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, working closely with them. On their recommendations for what we can do further would be important. And then e-bikes, we talked about, that's that's such a huge opportunity, we've got more kids riding them. Got people that are using cargo bikes, you need to provide safer places to park so that those don't get stolen. Of course, we need to educate our kids, make sure that they're safe and the people around them are safe. But that's a huge opportunity for us to reduce traffic as well. So I'm I'm in favor of One Hamilton, it's like I said, because we need this affordable housing and it's it is the affordable housing step that we're taking. I know there's issues with it, but I would not, I would not step back from that from a traffic perspective. Traffic studies are being done and the, you know, we've got recommendations from how how we'll mitigate that from the city staff based on data there.
Susan, new new topic, this comes from a reader who submitted a reader.
Listener.
A viewer. Comment about steps, lanes and paths, pointing out that a very popular beloved feature in Mill Valley, very useful. We found out in emergency evacuations as well. The viewer's concern is that some property owners are intruding upon steps, lanes and path. And the city is not aggressively pushing back enough to preserve. These steps, lakes and paths which exist either on. City-owned property or on granted easements beneficial for the whole neighborhood. As a city council member, what would you do to keep our steps, lanes and paths both developed and undeveloped protected? From future and past encroachments?
Yeah, well, clearly, it's it is, I agree with that priority that is implied by what the viewer is asking, I think that this these are critical for us to have. As part of our evacuation strategy, it's extremely necessary that we prevent encroachment as described. We've we've been fortunate to have folks in the community who have taken on stewardship of a lot of the steps, lanes and paths. I think. To the point about making sure that we keep these accessible and open. We need, if if it's not being done already, we need to have an inventory and a close view of every single one and an audit of what what the current state is and a dashboard set up so that we can monitor this. Changing over time because vegetation will encroach by of its own accord, if not, if not. Done intentionally. I I could also see us having a champion or some sort of like adopt a strip step lane and path such that. There are people who are designated and, you know, proudly take on the the support of this, I know in San Francisco, for example. There are folks that are putting their that are naming. Storm drains in funny ways, and they are kind of the stewards and they're like using their brim to make sure water can flow out and not flood and back up, could do something similar. And have fun with it in our steps, lanes and paths. So so taking advantage of the community desire to be supportive of these really beloved features of our community. And then making sure we have adequate resources that support them, I'm sure that the firefighters and others would would get behind that as well if there's ways we can. Elicit their collabora collaboration, cooperation.
Thanks, Susan, Caroline, steps, lanes and paths. The rate of the viewer is concerned about encroachments and the city not enforcing. Encroachments off the land, off the steps, lanes and paths.
Yeah. So steps, lanes and paths are probably one of the more important parts of our town, and there's a number of reasons why. Given that sixty percent of our parcels on hillsides and I live in in an area where there's no sidewalks. I utilized step lanes and paths all the time for safe pedestrian. Access and I did it when my kids were younger. And so that's a way that we can have safe pedestrian access, another alternative mode of transportation, if you will, but really. And also equally as important is that emergency egress, I mean, we need. To have the steps, lanes and paths as a possible emergency exit for whatever natural disaster event that happens. And we can't get down from the hillsides in our vehicles, so. We do have an inventory already, we do have a list of we, the city already prioritizes. A list of steps, lanes and paths that they deal with every year, the issue, you know, prior to Todd Cosimo coming on board. There was a time when steps, lanes and paths went dormant and it it wasn't a matter of. Of the fact that we should let it be undeveloped, it was a matter of enforcement, so this is absolutely key, we need to enforce. The easements, we need to enforce the fact that they are on city property, we need to enforce the fact that these provide such an important function to our community. That to not maintain them and to not keep it up. Is reckless, and so I would happily be the one to be up there and support and organize and get volunteers. Because I really do believe that steps, lanes and paths are an important part to the safety of our community.
Thank you, Caroline, and thank you, Susan, by the way, Caroline, the next question will come to you as we alternate back and forth. This comes from a viewer. What's your stance on the homeless people now living in a tent on Mid Miller Avenue? What's your suggestion to deal with the eventuality that additional homeless people will elect to elect to live on Mill Valley streets? In its parks or on fire-prone hillsides? Caroline, homelessness is the question.
Okay, so. Yes, dealing with. Unhoused, this is a current situation in Mill Valley. So the police are well aware and have shared that there are twelve to fifteen unhoused individuals that at various times are in our community. And the police check in on them every day, sometimes to see where they are, they have a usual spot where they go to and feel comfortable and other times to talk with them. And the police use organizations as a way to outreach because not everybody. Appreciates being approached by a police officer, so they do, they are very thoughtful in terms of their approach and in terms of their outreach. And the police do offer help and assistance, but that is not always accepted for various reasons. So it's a difficult situation and a delicate balance, because you cannot force help onto somebody unless. They're, you know, a direct threat to themselves or to others, so you really do have to work with best practices. We need to continue that outreach, continue using and leaning on other organizations that are that are better versed. In dealing with a multitude multitude of issues that unhoused individuals face, and then we need to be open to a possible solution, but. Right now, it's it's a situation that could grow into an issue, and so we should all be more aware of what's going on and. Supporting the individuals to get the the help and support they need and and hopefully they accept it.
Susan, homeless.
Yeah, I was fortunate to have take advantage of this, the opportunity that we have as a community to do ride-alongs with our. Police officers and I and the couple hours I spent with our sergeant, we we talked about the people who. Are known to be in the community without housings available to them, they are known to to our police officers by name. They are checked on frequently. They're. They are each and everyone at this point in time, as far as what I have been led to understand, they're not, they're not currently wanting to accept the support options that have been made available to them. A lot of this is kind of out of our community's hand, and it's really about a county-level solution, that's where a lot of this sort of public health. Aspect comes in and the Marin County. Services that that are available to the. To to help with homelessness and addiction and mental health, those, there are people who are trained. To support people with those conditions. Who are part of the response to the folks that are specifically in Mill Valley and they, our police officers are working closely with them to keep. Keep the options open and to keep encouraging people to to take it, you know, to benefit from those those opportunities. I think big picture, longer term, you know, I mentioned that I serve on this on Rin Can, which is a countywide board with several supervisors, so. You know, there's there's conversation about how we can look at this at a county level and 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 utilize those resources. Because again, getting at root causes of addiction and mental illness. Especially those kinds of things are above and beyond what what can be done at the city level, but need to be done as a partnership. We have also. The Marin County Council of Mayors and council members has a homeless subcommittee, and that's something that I'd be interested in serving on. Or being second, I guess, to the the. Current council member who serves on, because that's that this kind of solution is really important to me. As we go forward, it's part of the inclusiveness of our community, even if somebody is unhoused, they're still part of the community, and how do we? How do we make sure that they're protected and cared for and safe and offered the best solutions to help? Deal with the things that got them there in the first place.
Maybe tells me that we have a follow-up question from a viewer relating to this topic. The county's, Susan, let's start with you and answer this, Caroline, come back, but it's related to the same issue. Homelessness, the county's policy, or Susan, would you like to ask the question, there's maybe other question, you have it better than I do?
I was, the the question is, do the candidates support the housing-first model?
That is, housing first is not a term that I'm familiar with, but I I what I believe.
Essentially what the housing first model is, and Dick, you can correct me if you can say it better than I can. But essentially what it is, is it says that. You you can't expect homeless people to benefit from from housing if they. Aren't given the services to allow them to. To. To better avail themselves of the opportunity provided by the housing, in other words. Don't require that they be free of drugs or other criteria.
Well, housing, that's right first, actually, just to put, is is a bit more, and the housing is permanent supportive housing. The alternative model is what's followed in Sonoma, which has permanent supportive housing, but it also has transitional housing. The tiny homes is an example of what's done up Las Colicas in in Sonoma County. So the person, the question really relates to. Housing first, only permanent supporting housing, which is Marin County's permanent present policy, or should they add in? Temporary supportive housing, tiny homes or some other means to get people immediately off the streets. Susan, Caroline.
Well, it's complex, and even as you're describing that it's complex, and so I I tried to, I probably can't cover it fully in this time. And secondly, it's something I would want to look into a lot deeper to really understand fully the pros and cons and the consequences of the different actions. I mean, the outcomes we want are, it's it's not that we're getting people off the streets, but these people deserve to live in dignity. And find a way to 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 be members of the community and be be sheltered in a safe, safe and comfortable way, and. I I, you know, I understand other communities, other countries even, there are models that are working where it's a full-service approach, so. Housing options come with services and it's. It allows people to really transition. I I don't know that we can require that people be drug-free because addiction is something that can take some time to 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 deal with, and so I I wouldn't necessarily. Be a proponent of putting. Restrictions and criteria that that would prevent people from benefiting from housing while they're trying to work through and deal with. A rehabilitation situation, for example, I also don't think we can force people into these. Solutions, but I think we can make it very, very appealing and supportive by how we deal with it, so. There's a, there's an opportunity for us to work together as a community on this. Fortunately, I don't think it's so overwhelming that we can't achieve it, I think we're a community of means and a community that cares, so I think we're we're well positioned to to. To look into these kinds of things and again, kind of step up to the best practices that have been proven elsewhere as well.
Caroline.
Yeah, honestly, I I'm not well-versed on housing first, but. I will certainly tell you that what we've done thus far in terms of dealing with unhoused and the issue has failed. I don't believe that permanent housing has actually decreased. The number of unhoused individuals, and so any kind of program that's different. That deals with temporary housing and removes some of those restrictions to housing, for example, not requiring them to be. Sober or drug-free, I mean, there's probably issues involved with that, but it's why don't, why don't we try that, why don't we push for that, you know? It might be the first step that they need, just in terms of shelter, and then get them safely in a shelter or sheltered environment. And then take it from there in terms of the services, so. So, um, I'm certainly open to it and I'm gonna have to brush up and learn more because I do not know much about that first housing, so.
Caroline first, this time Susan, different topic entirely. What ideas do you have for the city to deal with the current unsustainable pension, retirement and retiree healthcare liabilities? Do you have any suggested changes in the current city's retirement setup? Uh, what ideas do you have that, uh, that might be able to help the city not get stuck in a hole with un-unfunded liabilities on pensions, retiree healthcare and the same and the like? Caroline.
Right, so, um, currently our finances are stable, but longer term, this is the issue. Um, it's dealing with pension, our pension obligation is going to be doubling in the next decade from four to eight million dollars and this increase would have a significant push on our budget. So what do we do? Um, so it's important to note that the city along the, along the years has been fiscally prudent in terms of putting money aside to deal with the pension. What's really the, uh, cost factor is the health benefits. So, um, part of it is, um, looking forward to seeing when that bump's going to arise and putting it as part of, uh, the city's ten-year business plan in order to deal with it. So, um, I'm not sure what, uh, form that's going to take, but we definitely need to be addressing it longer term. Um, former, uh, Mayor John McCauley wrote a report on it, so he is well versed and, and is certainly accessible to us um, in terms of recommendations and his knowledge of it. So, um, I don't have any specific plans because I haven't seen the specific proposals yet and we don't know the financial climate yet. So I think we just need to be open, but we're, uh, to the options, but certainly people in, in town are aware of it. And, um, I know it's going to be addressed in the, um, near term.
Susan, pensions.
Whoops, whoa, ah, can you hold on a second, I hit share, I'm trying to get out of that. Oh, yeah, I don't want to share my screen.
You're on right now, you're perfect.
Uh, you don't need to worry about it, we can't see your screen shared.
No, I, I know, but I can't, I can't see you anymore, um.
Not miss anything.
Oh, I see, okay, I got it, I did it, I just hit share by accident. Um, yeah, so, so the, the, the good news is we, we have, um, a, a long-term financial plan, which a lot of cities don't and we're not facing a cliff, which a lot of cities are. So we've been a really prudently managed city, um, and we build up a reserve of 1.2 million dollars. So we're, um, we're in good shape in terms of the obligations we need to meet near term. And we have a good long runway to deal with this, this shortfall that we know is, that we know is there. And, you know, folks like, like John McCauley and Larry Chu did do some re, really needed reform to help us, um, get out of the bind of the, um, health benefits, employee benefits that were, were going to be unsustainable. So that, that, that has helped take off some of the burden. Um, I did meet with our city treasurer today to just understand this a little bit more. And he shared that, you know, we're working with an actuarial firm that is doing rate projection for a real-time model that is looking at best case, worst case and, and where we can be in the middle as we continue to try to figure out the projections of how we're going to meet the unfunded part of the, the pension. Um, our, you know, our employees participate through the CalPERS system, so it's, it's again, but above and beyond what the city can do. But we, the things that are within our control is potential further ways of, um, closing the gap would be to not go forward with, with PERS for new employees, but provide other types of options for benefits like 457, which is like a 401K for public employees. Um, that would be something that would play out over time in terms of the closing that gap. Um, and, and there's other, there's other things we can do, whether it, it would be sort of an, yeah, oh, um, it, yeah, I think I'll stop there because there, there's a lot of things to talk about. It is concerning, but I, I think it's something that we have a handle on and we have options for. And, um, we can build on the reforms that have been done to date.
Folks, we're starting to wind down and, uh, we still have a few more questions. And, uh, the next one goes back to Rena, the regional housing needs allocation. Do you support joining other, oh, this is, um, last time we started with Caroline, Susan, you'd start this time. Uh, do you support joining other California smaller cities and file litigation to determine the courts if the state housing mandates and related usurpation of local planning control violates state law? In other words, you're talking about a lawsuit to try to overturn the Rena numbers. Do you believe the city of Mill Valley should join in that?
In short, no, I don't. I, I do understand the frustration by the folks who want to bring that kind of lawsuit. In general, I feel like legal action is always the action of very last resort. It's, it's a time where things get contentious and adversarial and there's a lot of options that we can do to, um, like I talked about before, fine tune the Rena numbers to our unique conditions as a hillside community. I've been in touch with some of the local leaders, uh, elected officials from other towns, um, just informal conversations about what can be done in terms of potentially like even if something along the lines of the cleanup bill that would help, um, mitigate some of the conditions that are put on us by, by such high numbers. But I wouldn't want us to back down from doing the best we can to make sure we have the most affordable housing options possible within the constraints that we have.
Thanks, Susan, Caroline. Should the city participate with other communities in filing suit to overturn the Rena allocations?
So as things stand today, I would say no, that, that would not be the prudent thing to do as of today. Um, the first order of business for our town is to get our housing element certified. So the city is not subjected to consequences such as fines and penalties, cut off from state and federal funding and losing control over proposed development. So Mill Valley is currently working on a second draft and it's going to be submitted in late April, so that is an ongoing process. I certainly, um, understand the anger and frustration with respect that's being dis, directed at the state because the increased number of units and towns across the state is creating incredible pressure. Um, as we have talked about, the new numbers are incredibly high, um, 600% from our last go around. And so, yeah, for right now, like the question, it will be absolutely challenging to thread the needle between meeting the mandate and keeping residents safe and our town green and beautiful. But to note, you know, we, this is a situation where I believe that we need to let some of these things that are happening in Southern California play out because we need to protect the city from making mistakes in terms of housing. So, um, I believe that there, I, we let the lawsuits play out in Southern California. There's no way to predict what will happen in the coming months, but I think we need to let them play out before we make a decision in terms of what we are going to do. And I will also note that, um, back in 2021, that our city council passed a resolution about exploring ways to protect the ability for cities to retain local control over, over zoning such as ballot measures. So obviously a ballot measure is very expensive, but that was one thing that the city council had previously considered. So, um, at this time, I don't think we should sue, um, but stay focused on getting the has, housing elements certified, closely watch the issue and then see what our options are.
Uh, Mimi, you have a question regarding tax and fees.
Right, uh, thanks Dick. Uh, this question came in through the, uh, Q and A channel and it is, how do you propose to reduce the tax and fee burden on, uh, Mill Valley residents?
And that would be, uh, Caroline, I think you're this time first.
Sure.
Maybe when you talk about tax and fees, you talk about real property taxes or?
I think, I think, uh, uh, no, I think what's meant here, um, would be, uh, local taxes over which you on the city council would have some effect. And fees would be things, uh, over which you would have controls such as, uh, building permit fees and, and, uh, things of that ilk, as well as some essential services over which you might have controls such as, um, sewer or refuse.
Tension, some contention that one of the restraints on housing is high government fees. Uh, I think that's part of what the question's about, Caroline and then Susan.
Sure, so, um, with respect to fees, I believe those, um, cover the services for our, our city. Um, I don't think that those are necessarily out of line. Um, I do know that when, um, you know, we bought our house in 2004 and, um, remodeled, uh, right before COVID. And, um, as part of that remodeling, we, um, you know, took care of the sewer lateral. So, um, that is one way where the city is able to, um, address deferred maintenance, if you will, um, and put it on to the property owner to, uh, fix. So, um, you know, at first blush, I wasn't happy about it, but, um, look, I understand. And, and in fact, I'm helping with the infrastructure and it was part of a remodeling project. So, um, at the end of the day, it is helpful to the city in that way. Um, with respect to taxes, um, there may be that, some of them, some of the taxes that we have on the books, um, I'm thinking about the municipal services taxes, that's going to, um, be up for, for remission in a couple of years, in the near term, I believe. And, you know, this may be an opportunity, depending on the city's long-term plan, um, there may be a progressive tax in the mix, um, that will make that MST obsolete. So, um, I think I'd have to take a look at all of them, the taxes and fees to see which ones are coming up. And if there's a different way to pay for, um, our services that we provide to the community, um, without compromising them, you know, I'd certainly be open to that.
Susan.
I'm just, I'm just hitting all kinds of wrong buttons. Um, I, first of all, the, we have the lowest sales tax in Marin, so we're already, we're already low, you know, the lowest we can be at that point. Um, if we needed, we could consider doing something even further if we needed to, but we're already there and we're also have the lowest, uh, business tax, um. So these kinds of things, whether it's looking at that or the real estate property tax are things that have to go to the voters. So I, I think it would be an important thing to understand how the community prioritizes this and what, what kind of pain this is causing and, and what levels are we talking about as far as the kind of reductions that the person asking the question was interested in? Um, you know, we, we may be bringing in, uh, some kind of revenue measure in 2024. I mean, my conversations with the current, the, the, the new city manager Todd Cosimo and the current council, I'm looking forward to listening, learning about, um, what kind of levels are needed, what kind of, what, what structure of tax and what would be the focus of the dollars, that's something that cost is all about. Um, when we're looking at, you know, we already have the, the fees that relate to affordable housing, for example, and those go into specific restricted funds. So those are, those are the kinds of fees that are being put to a very specific use and I, I think that makes sense. Um, we have an opportunity to look at potentially lowering fees if we want to encourage certain types of outcomes. So for example, permitting fees related to electrification, for example, could be, could be made lower to encourage, um, to, to, to encourage that kind of emissions reduction that we talked about earlier.
Thanks Susan, uh, by the way, I just want to point out to the viewers that some have asked about candidates' contributions. Uh, that information is available online. Each of the candidates files complete disclosures of every penny they, or most, almost every penny that they've received and spent. So I'm not going to ask those questions tonight, but I want to urge you to go to the county and the state websites that indicate full, complete disclosures. And I know both candidates have complied with that law, so it's available for the voters. Take advantage of it. Last question, folks. There's a, a development in Mill Valley, it's had some controversy, it's called Richardson Terrace, it's on east, excuse me, East Blightdale. Story polls are up and, uh, I know it's coming before the city council, so you can't tell us exactly how you vote, but you can tell us your opinion on what you see and what you like and what you don't like. Caroline, Richardson Terrace on East Blightdale, and then Susan, and this is the final question.
Okay, final question. Um, well, I can tell you that Richardson Project is an example of the tension between state laws and our local zoning and desires. So locally, there's frustration and understandably so, that that project did not address, uh, our more urgent needs of the community and that what I'm saying is it didn't have more affordable housing options within that project. Part of the problem is, or challenge, I should say, is the state laws, right? So you've got, um, Housing Accountability Act state law, which is designed to promote infill development by, uh, speeding up housing approval. So, you know, this particular situation, the developer met certain criteria and, you know, we lost a little bit of, of local control over working with him. Excuse me. So, um, I did think it was very interesting to have the school district, um, submit a letter of intent to, uh, purchase the six lower income units. And I think that's indicative of our need for affordable housing. So, um, yes, the, let, I also, I, I also want to say that, um, I was kind of taken aback um, on the date of the planning commission, when they, um, where they made the decision regarding this project, that they had received a letter from the state, um, threatening suit if they did not approve that project. So, um, to me, that shows that, you know, the state is taking a pretty heavy-handed approach with respect to development. Um, and it's not taking necessarily into consideration, um, you know, the local needs and the, and the residents in the surrounding area in terms of what ideally they wanted to see. But again, you know, you're dealing with the constraints of, of applicable state law. So, um, I don't think I'll say anything further other than, um, there's that tension between state and local law happening.
Susan, Phil Richardson's project on East Blightdale Avenue, your thoughts?
Was there more to the question or was that the?
Uh, the question was, uh, basically, what are your thoughts on the proposed, uh, Richardson Terrace development? Where I, we were located, you know where it's located. And I also, I know that you cannot state how you'd vote as a council member, but you keep, because it's on appeal, but you can state your thoughts on the development so far.
That's right, yeah, this is 575 East Blightdale and you're right, um, it is, it is under appeal, it has been approved by our planning commission by four to one. The dissension was Commissioner Greg Hildebrand, he, he did not approve just because he, you know, to kind of reflecting that frustration about we could do so much better with affordable in these few areas left to us. But again, we have, we have the constraints of making the economics work and you're, again, your column Dick called out market rate versus affordable and the role of subsidies and the types of partners and on and on. There's a lot of, there are a lot of factors at work here and this may not be the, the, the perfect solution. It may be the, uh, perfect is enemy of the good, even, you know, if, if this is even good enough, it's, it's what we're dealing with right now. So the good, the thing that I see coming out of this is that we will have an opportunity to, um, do better next time in terms of meeting these, these kind of, um, considerations like affordability and, um, you know, I've been meeting with stakeholders on the project, I've spent time with folks in the neighborhood, talking to the broader, the community. I attended that, some of the planning commission's meetings, um, so I can be up to speed if the timeline should change and I do have an opportunity to weigh in on it. Um, I, I am excited to see the letter of intent for the school district for the affordable units. Do need housing for teachers. I like that it's on a transit corridor, I know that, you know, the, the good news is just, there's walkability aspects that are appealing. I know there's traffic considerations and traffic calming that need to be looked at and, and addressed. Um, some of this will be supported by the object, objective design standard guidelines that, that are missing in Mill Valley and that's on our, that's on our city work plan, those are going to be developed. And those are, that's a place, again, alongside the housing element where we can really make sure and make explicit that affordability, um, and affordable units for low, medium income are addressed along with, along with also making sure that these buildings are built to the highest degree of sustainable building standards available to us.
I have to say, it's always a pleasure to moderate debates when you have excellent candidates that can, can be familiar and converse at the level we've seen tonight. Congratulations to both of you and by the way, thank you both of you for running. Caroline, please tell our listeners tonight, in the next two minutes, why you should be the next member of the Mill Valley City Council. And then Susan, you'll have the same opportunity. Caroline.
Great, so thank you all for this opportunity to speak tonight and share my vision for a role in city council. Um, special thanks to Cost for hosting us, Dick Spotswood for moderating and you for tuning in on a Thursday night. Um, we are all so fortunate to live in Mill Valley with its beautiful natural setting, thriving community, great schools, arts and music, our public library, our community center, retail, dining experiences and local serving businesses. We have it all and what a gift it is to be here. But what impresses me most are the people who live and work in this town, who work together to make our community better, stronger and more resilient. I've had the privilege of serving this community and creating a broad network of relationships as well as friendships. And I wanted to continue nurturing all that we have through service on, on our city council. So if elected, I will work diligently to foster our community's health and safety, to be fiscally prudent and socially responsible, to reach out and to listen to our community, to build consensus and work together to find solutions and to be a critical thinker and to make decisions that are in the best interest of our community. For more information about me or my campaign, please look at my website, carolinejoakim.com. And if nothing else, also take a look at my endorsements, um, includes residents, community and business leaders, former mayors, I've earned the support because of my demonstrated experience and service to date. And I hope I have earned your support tonight as well. I welcome your feedback and the opportunity to answer any questions that were not addressed tonight. It can be challenging to to share all the information in a 90 second clip. So please reach out, please vote for me as I am eager to continue serving our community. Thank you.
Caroline Jackman, thank you for being with us tonight. Susan Gladwin.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you again, Dick and Cost for hosting and this really important conversation. We're at such a critical juncture right now and that's what's motivating me to serve further. The conversation has opened up on racial and broader equity, diversity and inclusion topics, but there's work to do. So it's an opportunity to fully ensure we do better. That everyone feels they belong and can really enjoy the benefits of being part of the Mill Valley community. We're also facing a housing crisis that we discussed, pressure to meet the state mandate, how's our local workforce? And and yet find, and so it's an opportunity to fine tune how we approach safe housing as a hillside community and be sensitive to neighbor concern, neighborhood concerns. We're facing pressure of climate change and what that means to our community in terms of safety, emergency preparedness. And long term community resilience. So it's an opportunity we can seize to make our mobility, housing and small business cleaner and safer. So we can. Protect our most vulnerable in the community. So we need to keep our community safe, support the good work of our police and firefighters. And in addition to these priorities, I emphasize fiscal responsibility. And transparency. Um, and collaboration. I'm really proud to receive the endorsement of the 400 Marin professional firefighters, 70,000 members of the North Bay Labor Council. Union members, 4,400 local members of the of the Sierra Club and the Democratic Party. Party demonstrating my ability to work as a collaborative and local leader. But I'm really especially proud of diverse endorsements I've received across the community and school leadership. Local business owners, elected and appointed officials, both in Mill Valley and throughout the region. I have loved being part of this community in my 15 years of service and leadership. I look forward to being part of the collegial culture that our council past and present has fostered. It's a time of convergence and the good news is that we are creative community who can come. Have I gotten unmuted? I just got a mute. I guess I'm continuing. We have proven time and time again.
You're good now. You're on.
Okay, we have proven time and time again that when we come together, we can make things happen. Please visit susanformillvalley.com. To learn more about my candidacy. I'm honored to earn your, I'd be honored to earn your vote and support and support of our future together. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the candidates and Dick Spotswood and a special thanks to Alan Shavitz, our outstanding webinar administrator. Who supports us and other local nonprofits by donating his time. I'd also like to thank Mimi Willard, the president of Cost for her hard work helping to organize this forum. Please understand that all the work we do here is not cost free. I hope you'll consider making a donation and to donate, just go to our webpage, www.costmarin.org. Uh, this video will be posted on our homepage by the end of day tomorrow, Friday. Finally, I want to thank you. The voters. For watching this, forwarding questions and participating in our democracy. Good night.